Yep, okay Frank? I don't see him. Okay, meeting will come to order. Bill? Mr. Moffett?
This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Publics Meeting Act. Public, proper public notice so this meeting was published in the local papers on January 10th, 2015 and January 11th, 2015. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that this meeting is in violation of the Open Publics Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The Board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the Board at a later date on cable television Channel 77 and Fios Channel 46. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cellphones and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence electronic devices during the course of the meeting and if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business. Thank you. Madam President? Please rise for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call please.
Ms. Angley?
Here.
Ms. Biancamano?
Present.
Ms. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Cluffell?
Here.
Ms. Mitchell?
Here.
Ms. Sobolov?
Here.
Ms. Stromwall?
Here.
And Ms. Tyroller?
Here.
Now we'll have the recognition portion of the meeting. Dr. Hernandez and Dr. Bercel is not here this evening and, Doctor, we're in the able hands of our Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Hernandez.
Good evening, Madam President and fellow Board members. As always, it's a pleasure to present the Students of the Month. This evening, we have our first student from Brant School, Madison Rampersall. Madison is a respectful and helpful student towards her peers and teachers. She's polite and uses kind words. She demonstrates higher thinking ability and shows an enthusiasm for learning. She works hard on all assignments and puts forth her very best effort in all academic areas. Please join me in congratulating Madison. Our next student is from Collaboral School, Noi Frimer. Noi is a second grader. Noi goes above and beyond to the best of her ability academically and socially. She always strives to stay focused and works very hard to complete all her assignments in a timely manner. It's evident through her classroom behavior that school is a priority. Noi is a polite girl who has a positive attitude in and out of the classroom. She is friendly and kind to all of her classmates and is always willing to help others when needed. It is with great honor that I present her with this certificate as the Student of the Month from Collaboral. Please join me in congratulating Noi.
Dr. Hernandez, do you want to stand next to her and face her mom?
Sure.
Honey, go back by so that you can get the picture.
Our next student is a fourth grader from Connor's Elementary School, Pedro Gonzalez. Pedro possesses a true love of learning. He is always asking questions, reading about a range of topics and researching things he did not know about. His teachers can rely on him for consistent, quality work that is always his best. Pedro is not deterred by challenges and welcomes unwillingly. His creativity and problem-solving skills are great models for his classmates. Pedro's passion for education will result in continued academic success in fourth grade and beyond. Please join me in congratulating Pedro. Our next student is a fourth grader, Luigi Semlecas, from Wallace Elementary School. Luigi joined our Wallace School family in late September with very little English. Although he did not know the language, Luigi strived to succeed in his academics. He asked for additional books to read at home and worked hard towards acquiring the language. "I'm very proud of Luigi," states Mr. Bailey and his teachers. "He is now speaking, reading and writing English to the best of his ability. He is a self-motivated student with an eagerness to learn." Please join me in congratulating Luigi. Our next student is from the Hoboken Junior High School, seventh grader Amanda Mestry. Amanda is an inquisitive student who is always prepared. She is extremely supportive of her classmates. Amanda makes every class she is in better and she elevates the bar academically. Amanda will be a red wing that leads us to further success in the future. Please join me in congratulating Amanda. Our High School Student of the Month is eleventh grader Nicholas Sobolov. Nicholas is an excellent student and athlete. He is always very personable and is always there to lend a hand when needed. Nicholas is doing very well in his classrooms. He is currently enrolled in some very difficult courses which he's doing well in. These courses include AP US History, AP Language Arts and Composition, as well as pre-calculus honors and chemistry honors. We believe he represents what is great about the student body at Hoboken Junior Senior High School. Please join me in congratulating Nicholas.
That concludes the recognitions. Thank you.
Thank you. So now, we are going to go into executive session. It's going to be for no more than 45 minutes and it'll give the recognition people, thank you so much for coming and it was great. It'll be for legal and personnel. Bill, can you please read the statement?
Whereas the Hoboken Board of Education seeks to adjourn to executive session in full compliance with the Open Publics Meeting Act, whereas the Open Publics Meeting Act provides that a public body may exclude the public from a portion of the meeting at which it is discussed matters pertaining to personnel negotiations and/or litigation now, be it resolved, that the Hoboken Board of Education adjourns to executive session to discuss matters of legal update and personnel.
I think we should be specific about pending litigation.
Pending litigation.
Yeah, and personnel.
And personnel, right, for approximately 45 minutes. Be it further resolved that the minutes of this discussion of any of these items will be disclosed to the public when matters have been determined and confidentiality is no longer required, action may be taken by the Board of Education. The estimated time again for this executive session will be approximately 45 minutes.
I move it.
Call roll.
Yes, please.
Ms. Angley?
Here.
Yes, yes. Mr. Biancamano?
Aye.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Cluffell?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Sobolov?
Yes.
Ms. Stromwall?
Yes.
And Ms. Tyroller?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Moffett, can you bring us out of closed session?
I guess we'll call for a motion to come back into session.
Second. Oh, we need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Yeah, Mr. Biancamano. Call roll. Ms. Angley?
Here.
Ms. Biancamano?
Aye.
Ms. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Cluffell?
Here.
Ms. Mitchell?
Here.
Ms. Sobolov?
Here.
Ms. Stromwall?
Here.
And Ms. Tyroller?
Here.
Okay, so now we're going to move on to administration and committee reports. We'll start with the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Hernandez?
I just have the items for corrections on the Board Agenda. Resolution number 9.10 should read Hoboken Junior Senior High School Title I Saturday Program, not Test Prep. And under Resolution 9.12, should read Wallace Title I After-School Program. And the corrected account number is 20-231-100-101-18-0000-006. Thank you.
Okay, and do you have a, and you also have the statement from Dr. Bercel as he was unable to come tonight?
Yes. On behalf of Dr. Bercel, I would like to make a statement regarding the Star Ledger editorial which was published Sunday, January 11th, and I quote, "As an educator for the past 44 years and a superintendent in both New York and New Jersey for the past 17 years, I am astonished at the way in which articles and editorials in the press, particularly the Star Ledger, misstates and misrepresents the facts. We are all in the business of educating children, so to suggest anything that would appear as though the Board of Education is not acting in that interest is wrong." Unquote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moffett?
Yes, I have two items. First item I'd like to report, I know it's been, coming up the last few Board meetings had to do with the Brant SDA project. I said to the Board, "I'll believe it when I see documents hit my desk," and I would like to report that I did see documents hit my desk and I signed off on them. And I know they discussed them in the Facility Committee, so they'll be addressing that. Ms. Mitchell will be addressing that in her comments. But to just report, I signed off on amended budget and a lot of other documents related to the approval process and the document review. It's down with the city for final approval from their agency. Once we get that back, we'll ship it down to the SDA and keep it moving. So, I crossed fingers again, so that's good news for everybody that's been involved over the past several years. The other item I'd like to report is, I was asked by the President to look into how the Board approves policies and basically that whole procedure is how you review them, how they're presented and then how they're approved by the Board, just from some general comments made by the public, so I'll be doing some research reporting out to you as a Board at a later date.
And also to determine whether we are going to, we have in the past attached policy to the agenda, correct?
That is correct, right.
Thank you.
That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to committee reports. Ms. Stromwall, curriculum?
We met on Tuesday, January 6th. Dr. Hernandez, Dr. Bercel, myself, Ms. Tyroller, Ms. Sobolov, Mr. Bartlett, Mrs. DiCanto and Mr. Shehagen and Mrs. Cruzo from the Jubilee Center met. We discussed working together with possibly a summer program. The new teacher institute was discussed and there was 30 attendees and it was about managing student behaviors and they all received one hour of professional development. District website has had some updates for the park information, so we encourage all parents, faculty and staff to take a look. There's resources for the parents and some other additional updates have been made. Faculty can look on any mobile device now and gather their curriculum, which is a really great thing, so they can be anywhere and know what's going on. They don't have to be logged into the end drive. And Park Family Presentations have been happening past week for the PTO members. I went the other day at Wallace and it was really beneficial and I think the junior senior high school will be happening tomorrow. So, please go and if you have any questions, Mr. Bartlett and Ms. DiCanto did a really great job explaining what's going on for Park. And that's all, my report.
Thank you. Ms. Evans, Governance and Personnel?
Okay. The Governance and Personnel Committee met on Wednesday, January 7th from 10:30 to 12:30. In attendance were Dr. Bercel, myself, Ms. Fabian, Dr. Hernandez, Mr. Moffett, Ms. Stromwall, Ms. Tyroller and Ms. Sobolov. Ms. Fabian updated the committee on pending legal matters and answered questions from committee members regarding legal issues. The committee also discussed personnel matters and the committee reviewed all agenda items on the agenda for this evening for Governance and Personnel and recommends all for approval by the Board. And we also have an addition to the agenda for this evening that will fall under Governance and Personnel and I'll just read it so that everyone knows what it says. And it says, "Resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the Board President to send a letter to the editor regarding the Ola litigation in response to the Star Ledger's January 11, 2015 editorial, consistent with the discussions with council in executive session." And that's my report.
Thank you. Mr. Cluffell, Finance?
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance Committee met on Wednesday, January 3rd last week from 8:30 until 9:30. Joining me were Mr. Moffett, Ms. Sobolov, Ms. Stromwall and Ms. Tyroller. There are only a handful of items, if you've looked at the Agenda, Finance items on this month's Agenda. Most of them are predictable and normal. The Board did review all of them with Mr. Moffett and we recommend them all for approval. The one that will of course jump out is the renewal of the scaffolding for Brant. We're all disappointed by that, of course. Our hands are tied, but on the other hand, we have good news tonight, so maybe this will be the last time we ever talk about renewing scaffolding at Brant. We did talk about some non-agenda items, Food Service Report. Maybe that will be talked at a different committee, but in terms of finances, Mr. Moffett reported that Sodexo is reporting that we're on a, about on a par where we were last year. So that's good news. We're holding our own now, at least Sodexo is with Food Services. And we always get a little report on where we are with legal fees and we are on budget and it looks like we're in good shape there. If I may, can I continue with our Communications Committee?
Yes, yes.
Because we met the following morning, that Thursday, January 4th, from 8:30 till 9:30. And we met with specifically, the first part of the meeting was with Michelle McGreevy, who was the media specialist at the high school and our new communications coordinator. And she updated us on some of the work going on with staff for the sort of updating and overhauling the website, possibility of a mobile app to just get information about the district out a little faster, a little easier. Also, her program for upcoming district newsletters. The second half of the meeting was a delightful and enthusiastic session with a group that calls themselves Residents for Red Wings, and I'm not going to tell you more about that because I think some of them are here tonight and I've got my fingers crossed that they might come up during the public portion later on and maybe introduce themselves. So I don't want to steal any of their thunder. And you will do that, right?
Well...
Perfect. That concludes my reports.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Sobolov?
Hello? Oh, this is working, it's working. The Athletics and Performing Arts Committee met on January 6th. In attendance was myself, Dr. Hernandez, President Tyroller and Jim Marie Mitchell. The Athletic Director Derek England joined the committee to review and discuss all aspects of the athletic program. Discussed were student participation overall and in individual sports, budget, volunteer opportunities and fundraising opportunities. The Hoboken High School Athletic Department includes approximately 20 different athletic programs, freshman JV and varsity, and provides instructional training and competitive opportunities for over 400 student athletes. In Performing Arts, the Drama Club volunteered at the Hoboken Family Alliance Christmas Party and at the HEA Holiday Event honoring the State Teacher of the Year, Mr. Martone. The Backstage Club and the Drama Club students continue to work hard getting ready for Grease, which is their next production on February 6th, 7th and 8th. Many students and staff had come in over the holiday break to rehearse or continue working on the sets, including the Grease Lightning car that the students are building. In anticipation for the all-district production of Shrek the Musical, the Drama Club is planning a Shrek movie night in the high school auditorium. And the Stan Competition, which is a theater arts and drama and dialogue competition, that's on January 31st and they've been practicing hard for that. And then I wanted to mention, you'll see it on the Agenda, the Hudson County Teen Arts First Annual Theater Day, which we will be hosting at the Hoboken Junior Senior High School in February. And we will be hosting 60 students from districts all over Hudson County and a professor from NJCU and Hoboken High will lead workshops and all the other kinds of performing arts opportunities and they will have a presenter. So it's a full-day event in our auditoriums and our dance and our theater rooms and it should be a nice event for students from all over the county. So that's new and that sounded exciting and that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, Facilities and also Wellness?
Okay, the Facilities Committee was held on January 7th. Attendees was myself, Jim Marie Mitchell as the Chair, Tim Callagie, Director of Facilities, John Paparota and Brian Beany from Sodexo. On Food Service, there'll be a nutritionist at the high school this Thursday to work with the high school students to discuss and instruct them on healthy eating habits and nutrition. The cost for that nutritionist is covered by Sodexo. Sodexo is also supplying the fruits, vegetables, meats, grains and oils for the culinary arts program. They also are going to have a small part in the February theater production of Grease. They'll be, I thought it was so funny, it's grease. They'll be, they'll be providing fresh food for the diner scene. So I thought that was interesting. For Facilities, there was a lot of work done over the holiday, over the holiday break and Mr. Callagie informed me that there was no overtime though for all the workers that were improving the district. Brant scaffolding, the SDA approved the work and the work, the drawings were submitted to City Hall Code Office for approval. The city received the plans on January 7th. The city needs to just sign off on the oversight of the project. Once the city signs off, the plans will be sent back, will be sent, I think, here, back to Tim and they'll be sent to the state to authorize to have the district bid out for the work. So we've really made a lot of progress this week, was good news. Several, at Brant, several walls were repaired on the second and third floors. It did not affect the classrooms. There was a minor leak in the bathroom. Technology Grant, the United Arab Emirates Technology Improvement Grant for our district is 75% completed. The grant, made on behalf of the people of the UAE, will help address critical technology needs such as infrastructure at 30 public schools in nine districts in the state that were impacted by Hurricane Sandy. Connor School was completed and Demeris was completed last week. During the winter break, many switches and wireless access points were replaced and added. The project is ahead of schedule. The technology upgrades will make our district more park-ready. At Wallace School, there were continued improvements in the lobby. The brickwork was covered with sheet rock and the floors were updated for a more modern look. The PTO is an active partner in design and upgrade of this Wallace School lobby. At Demeris, there was a fire pump replacement and the interface between the new and the old boiler were installed. Both boilers are working together as one system and we can see it's working quite well today. And the high school, there were, the high school, there were some sidewalk repairs over the, over the holiday break. Okay, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the President's Report. This past weekend, as both Ms. Evans and Dr. Hernandez mentioned, there was, in the Star Ledger, there was an editorial regarding Ola's request to the Department of Education to approve a weighted lottery to assist them in balancing their demographics. The letter to the Department of Education was dated December 23rd and it requested a decision by December 31st. Dr. Bercel, our Superintendent, received a copy of the email on January 5th. He presented it to the Governance Committee on January 7th. I raise this because the editorial, which has been widely shared, insinuates that we attempted to block Ola's attempt to administer this said weighted lottery, which we did not, as, we did not know about it until the January 7th meeting, a week after the December 31st deadline outlined in their letter. As the letter discussed, the Ola lottery in terms of the seventh grade, we did request that the Department of Education complete its reconsideration of the expansion, which was raised over a year ago and still awaits a resolution. I personally am glad that Ola recognizes that the current system does not create acceptable results. The statistical effects of the suggested lottery modification should certainly be examined by the DOE. The editorial references about Newark, however, I would also like, you know, the DOE to think about considering the effects of the universal application, which is Newark's attempt at resolving similar issues, which would include, universal lottery would include all public schools, district and charter. On another note, and happier note, we are very proud of our fall athletes who performed on the field and also in the classroom this past fall sports season. Participation in sports is a great motivator for many of our athletes to keep up with their schoolwork. There has been a little bit of confusion by some parents and community members about the eligibility for fall sports, for a child to be eligible for fall sports. Academic and conduct standing at the end of June is what dictates whether a student is eligible in the fall. For our, and obviously just for any students that participate in fall sports but not winter or spring, that should be a good reminder that you got to keep your grades up because how you're doing in June determines whether or not you can play in the fall. But I think because the summer goes by and maybe your child was struggling in June, by the time you get to fall, you feel like all this time has passed, when in actuality, your academic standing in June determines your eligibility in the fall. So I just wanted to remind everyone of that. As Ms. Mitchell referenced, she was talking about the lobby at Wallace. Well, when we started the school year, Wallace students and parents came back to beautifully painted hallways. Arriving back to school from winter break, the students were greeted by a new look to the front facade of the building, silhouettes of children playing and of course, the bright white lobby as it's awaiting its new look, which will be coming over the next couple of months. The hallways and the silhouettes were designed by Wallace parents and crafted and installed by our own district carpenter. I wanted to publicly thank Wallace parents, Stina Sorensen and Jackie Dowd and our employee, district carpenter Mario Calicchio, because it was a wonderful team effort with a wonderful result. So... a wonderful team effort with a wonderful result. So anyone who is in the Wallace vicinity, remember, it's the northern face of the building, and the silhouettes are beautiful. So anyone who's listening to this on the television, make sure you go look because it's beautiful, and it really is an exciting change to the building. Lastly, next Wednesday, January 21st, I will be attending the City Council meeting to introduce our own Mark Matone, the New Jersey Teacher of the Year, because the mayor is going to re-present the proclamation that he received from the city at the HEA event honoring him, which we had at the end of December. Board members and staff, as well as parents, are certainly welcome to come, and if you're interested in coming, the meeting starts at 7:00 PM, and it would be really nice if you'd like to come to support. And I'll just be doing a little intro. So I think that that's a great thing. And I think one of our parents from Wallace is in the audience, so thank you for a great job. Okay, so that concludes the reports. Now we will have Board Trustee comments on Committee Reports. So I'll start... Oh, should I do that to you? Or should... I'm going to start on the left. Monica, do you have any comments?
Nope.
No, you're okay?
I'm sorry, we're commenting Committee Reports?
Well, the reports we just gave, Administration, Committee, and mine.
Okay. I'm good.
No comments? Tom?
Yeah, I would like actually to add something on to one of my Committee Reports, if I may.
Absolutely.
It was something that was discussed in Finance Committee, where we talk about spending money way too often and not about money coming in. And I would like to acknowledge a donation that we are... is a resolution to accept. There's a Hoboken resident, Ms. Anne McKendra, who is a media specialist at a public school in another district. She also participates, as I understand it, in a sort of a review program of novels for young adults. In her role as a reviewer, she receives many, if not hundreds, of review copies, and she is generously donating a couple of thousand dollars' worth of books to our students. So I just wanted to acknowledge that publicly. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you, Tom.
Ruthie? Ruthie?
Okay.
Ruthie? I'm sorry, I actually did want to comment. I just got...
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Evans.
So I ordinarily don't say too much during meetings, but I did want to comment on Ruthie and Dr. Brakel's comment about the editorial that appeared in the Star Ledger. You know, I've been on the board for a year, and there have certainly been times when I felt that the board has been unfairly represented, or our intentions have been misrepresented. But, you know, I didn't say anything because I felt that most reasonable people would recognize, you know, that that was the case, that it was a misrepresentation, and that also there's a certain element of that's what board service is about, and you need to have a bit of a thick skin. But with that said, I do feel that this editorial, you know, is beyond pale, and that in addition to being extremely unfair and misrepresenting the board, I also think that it does a great disservice to our community. And, you know, I just want to clarify a few things, and one is that, as Ruthie and Dr. Hernandez said, you know, we did not oppose a weighted lottery, and, you know, in fact, the petition or lawsuit, whatever you want to call it, that we're seeking... what we're seeking is relief. We're asking the Department of Ed to help us. That these are really complicated issues, and we're asking for help from the Department of Ed, both from the segregative effect and also the financial effect that charter expansion is having on our district. So, you know, to imply that we don't want to fix the situation is profoundly unfair. And just again, to give a sense of the timing of what occurred, and, you know, just how absurd it is to say that it's the board's fault that the change to the lottery didn't occur, the letter that Ola put together is dated December 23rd, and it was sent to the Department of Ed on December 23rd, and it requests action by the Department of Ed by December 31st. Now, this is all really serious, but I would point out that the Department of Ed is a government agency, and to expect a government agency to give you a result or action in a week that encompasses Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, a weekend, and New Year's Eve is optimistic, to say the least. So to expect the Department of Ed to act, and then to have it not act, I assume, I don't know if they did even respond, but to not see that perhaps many things were contributing that would have this decision not made, that has nothing to do with the Board of Ed, perhaps is not looking inward and looking at other factors. And as has come out, we did not even receive this letter until January 5th after the requested deadline. So there was no way that we could have impacted the requested decision by the Department of Ed. And so, in conclusion, I just don't feel that this editorial, or, you know, whoever provided this information to the Star Ledger, is helping the situation in our community. This is a very sensitive issue. It's been extremely divisive in our community, and it's been inflammatory, and to, you know, basically pour flames on it does not help us, does not help us move things forward. I know as a board member, and I feel, you know, as a member of this board, we want a productive conversation, and things such as that editorial does not serve any of us well. And I just wanted to make those comments.
Thank you. Ms. Angley, any comments?
No comments.
Mr. Biancomano?
Yes, of course. As Mr. Kleffel and Ms. Mitchell and Mr. Moffett all touched up in their reports concerning the scaffolding at Brand School, and many, many people know that this issue is really close to my heart, and as Mr. Kleffel said in his report, our hands are tied, and he's certainly right. But I just feel that the SDA really, really failed us, failed this district. The state of New Jersey failed this district. Tonight we have a resolution on this agenda for $44,000 to keep that scaffolding at Brand School up until the end of June. After that $44,000 is paid, it's going to be close to a half a million dollars in the last three years that scaffolding has been up, and it's solely because the SDA dragged their feet. I mean, we talk about, last year we had budget constraints, we laid off bus drivers, certain members of this board have mentioned this in the past, and we talk about non-educational spending. And when I look at something that probably shouldn't have taken this long, and again, no fault to anybody on this board, a total fault to the SDA, I just think that they failed this school district. Like I said, a half a million dollars to keep scaffolding up at Brand School because the SDA dragged their feet, and the state of New Jersey dragged their feet. So it's extremely disappointing in the SDA, but I am pleased with all the reports that were given tonight. I am... I do commend... Mr. Moffett, I think we've gotten more of a response in the last month than we did in the past years that this scaffolding has been up. So I do commend the members of the board for making this a top priority, but like I said, it's late. The only positive sign about this whole thing is that we are going to get reimbursed at close to half a million dollars, from what they're saying, and it's going to be nice finally to see money come in on the revenue side and not have to spend money while others tie our hands even tighter to take Mr. Kleffel's line. So I just want to mention that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell?
No comments.
Ms. Sobolov?
Yes, I just... I don't want to reiterate what I think a lot of other people have already said, but I was at that meeting, the Governance Meeting, excuse me, when we discussed the correspondence from the Ola Charter School that we received on January 5th. And I think even at that time, maybe some of us thought that the application was for next year because the Ola lottery was already closed on that day. January 5th was the deadline for their application. So I was very shocked and upset to see a couple days later, an editorial sort of blaming us. It made me kind of angry and upset, and I looked back over the application, and Ola had passed a resolution on December 10th authorizing their board to make an application or request to the commissioner, which they didn't, which two weeks had passed before their board president had actually contacted the commissioner. And that was a request for the weighted lottery. And in case, maybe people don't know, sometimes we use words. The weighted lottery means that everybody who applies for the charter school gets a number, and then after the sibling spots are removed, anybody who is eligible for free reduced lunch gets one extra number or a ball, I guess, if they use the bingo. So that's... and that's after the sibling spots are taken. So the commissioner was notified on the 23rd. We didn't get it until January 5th. So I was concerned about the delay, the sort of... It didn't seem to me an urgent matter when their deadline was the 31st, which, as Jen pointed out, is New Year's Eve. But then, two or three days later, a full editorial arrives in the paper. So it was shocking, and I think what is also really disheartening to me, as Jen says it's a very divisive thing, is to have the Ola board members sharing it on their Facebook and in their blogs immediately, within 8:30 that morning. And so it makes me wonder what the priority was and what, you know, what that means going forward when we're not even brought into the discussion until January 5th, when it's already too late, but the Ola board members are already sharing that online as if it were true and if it was a fact. So I'm actually curious as to who brought that issue to the newspaper, and I hope that they would share with Mr. Moran the timeline and our part in that, and everybody's parts in that, because I think it's a tough thing, you know. There are a lot of families. We all know each other. We're all friends. I think this... to make hay out of this kind of request, which we have always been asking for the universal opt-out application, but certainly a weighted lottery, you know, was everything is open for interest and discussion. I don't know why it would take from December 10th, a month later, for contact to be made. So I think that's a shame, and I hope that whoever contacted the paper in the first place to get the editorial, it makes it their business to re-contact them again and hopefully get a fuller, more fleshed-out story about the whole situation. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just have a comment on the reports. I... yeah, the 44... It's great that we're reimbursed for the scaffolding and that that actually doesn't affect us, but of course, some... it's coming out of some New Jersey account, and that's our taxes. So in some way or another, we are all paying for the scaffolding. So, Mr. Biancomano and everyone, it really is a shame that it takes the time, but I think every, you know, the SDA, you know, hundreds of projects, and only a few are approved. So I'm just thankful that this was approved and that it really is moving at this point. And Ms. Sobolov mentioned Shrek the Movie. One of the most fun things I did in the fall was go see Frozen at the high school when the Drama Club had it. It was adorable. It was fun for all kids of all ages. It's open to anybody in Hoboken, and I strongly suggest that you go see Shrek the Movie because Frozen was fun. I'm sure Shrek will be just as fun. Okay, so that concludes Committee Reports and Board Comments. We're now moving on to public comments on the agenda. So, Mr. Moffett, how many speakers do we have?
I don't have anyone signed up for...
No one signed up?
No, I have a few for the non-agenda items.
Okay, so this will be quick because we'll go through the agenda, and then we'll have the next set of questions. So I guess there's no Board Trustee comments on public agenda comments. So now we will move on to Board Trustee comments on agenda items. So this is if you want to make a comment about any item on the agenda before we move to vote. And this will be... this will include... will include the item that was added by Jen to approve whether or not I should submit the letter we discussed to the Star Ledger. That's going to be a yes or no vote by the board so that I could do it on... so that the board wants to do it on behalf... the President on behalf of the board. So comments about that as well.
First of all, I move a consent agenda.
Second?
So if I could get a point of clarification, that includes, inclusive of the additional item that we entered at the end?
Yes.
So consent agenda was motioned by Mr. Kleffel. Do I have a second?
Second. Irene?
Irene, second. I think it's not working.
Okay, now do you want to move to discussion?
Yes. From the left?
I'm good.
Thank you.
I'm good.
From the right?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Angley, no? Okay, Mr. Biancomano?
Absolutely. 9.10, the approval of staff to a pool for test prep tutors at the Hoboken Junior/Senior High School. Dr. Hernandez, you touched up on this, and you changed the wording around in the resolution, but should the resolution actually say the park test and not the ASSA and the HESPA?
No, the change in the piece where it says position, test prep tutor?
Right.
That's changing to...
Because I was under the impression that all of our schools are taking the park test this year. Is that correct?
Yes, but no, the...
Right.
The HESPA is for the current seniors?
Oh, I see.
Who still have to go through that process if they didn't ask it last year?
So we do have a number of students... So the current seniors have to take the HESPA and the park?
No, no, just the HESPA.
Just the HESPA, right, I see. And then, well, I guess my follow-up question was, will the park test affect students graduating from high school? But obviously, it won't since the current seniors don't have to take it, correct?
No.
But the HESPA will, obviously.
Right.
And just, okay, thank you. And just a quick comment. I just want to commend the administration tonight. There's many hirings on this agenda from people within our community, whether that's aides, substitutes, or permanent teacher positions. And I'm a big person of hiring within our community. We are one of the largest employment people in the city of Hoboken, and tonight it clearly shows. So I want to commend the administration on hiring great candidates from within Hoboken. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Mitchell?
No.
Ms. Sobolov?
Just a comment really quick on 9.07. I just wanted to say thank you to the volunteers. We have a few parent volunteers, one in the Student Center at the high school, the Student Based Youth Center, and two for the theater. So I just wanted to thank them for their time and efforts.
Okay. I have no comments, so we can move to vote.
Call roll for the vote on consent agenda plus...
Madam Chair, can I just ask a quick question? We're adding the letter that you want to submit to the Star Ledger to the consent agenda. Does that... maybe Mr. Gagulati can confirm this. Does that need a resolution number?
I guess if it is the last item in the Governance and Personnel Committee Agenda, which has been assigned a number for classification purposes. So with the leave of the Board Secretary, it appears that that would be item number 9.17. Is that correct, sir?
Yes, sir.
That would be the number 9.17.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Call roll. Madam President?
Yes.
Miss Angley?
Yes.
Mr. Biancomano?
No on 9.17, and yes on everything else.
Yes.
Mr. Kleffel?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Sobolov?
Yes.
Ms. Traumwoll?
Yes.
And Ms. Tyroller?
Yes.
Okay, so now we will move on to public comments. How many speakers do we have, Mr. Moffett?
I have four. The first speaker is Shalaya Delera. I think I got it right?
Okay.
Sheila, say it.
Your name and address, please, and it's five minutes. Tom times you. Mr. Kleffel times you.
Sheila Delera, and it's 1,000 Hudson Street. Good evening, board members. I come to you tonight to present to you... well, first, let me introduce myself. My name is Sheila Delera, and I am a stay-at-home mom of two kids currently enrolled in the Wallace Elementary School. My daughter is pre-K 3, and my son is pre-K 4. My son is five years old, and he was diagnosed with autism at the age of two. He's currently in the Applied Behavior Analysis Program at Wallace, under the care of Ms. Michelle Zubey and Mr. Mark Matone. I come here today to tell you, first of all, I am so happy with the program and where he's at. He's five, and he's on the road to becoming fully verbal. Again... He's five, and he's on the road to becoming fully verbal and getting stronger every day. When he started school, he was non-verbal, he was three years old. And I owe a lot to that, to the therapist and the specialist and all the teachers that work so hard with him every single day. And thank you to you two for all the support that you give these teachers. A lot of the work that you do goes on notice and is behind the scenes. So I come here in front of you, from all the parents and all the families that are affected by autism at Wallace, so thank you. I also want to present to you a series of fundraising events that I'm working on at Wallace. Last year, I hosted a charity ride. I'm also spin instructor at Work It Out Fitness Studio. Last year, I hosted a charity ride and called Ride for a Cause, in honor of autism awareness. We raised enough money to be able to buy software apps or speech impairment apps for every child in the pre-K 3 and pre-K 4 program that was currently involved, involved in the In addition to that, we also were able to buy sensory-friendly items, such as toys and games and things that they use for gym class and therapy and so forth. This year, we're going to do it again, but this year, I want to do it bigger. I want to reach the entire ABA class at Wallace, not just pre-K 3, pre-K 4, but the entire, all the students that right now are getting ABA treatment. We've had one kickoff event, and it was very successful, very, very successful. We've got two more coming up, and they're all family-friendly events. And then my last one is my big charity ride, which I plan to do again. Before Mark, Mr. Matone, went for his sabbatical, we've met, we've met a lot about what it is, you know, what are some of the wish lists, items that these classes need. And we sat, and I've sat with a lot of teachers, and I've done my research, and I've come up with a great list. And I'm more than happy to go over it with you, you know, later time when I have a little bit more time. But basically, my goal is to raise enough funds to meet these wishes for the teachers and for the students in the entire ABA program at Wallace. So I come here to you to say thank you so much for your support. Thank you for all you do, especially for these kids, because every child needs support. But these 34 kids at Wallace on their ABA need a little extra support, and so I thank you for that. And especially for letting me be a part of that little bit of extra support that they need. And I invite you two, please, if you are not a spin fanatic, but just come and support my cause. You know, whether it's getting on the bike or just helping me promote my event, that would be really, really helpful. And that's it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it is. It deserves a round of applause. Thank you. Next speaker?
Melissa Shepherd.
Hi, good evening. Melissa Shepherd, 1333 Hudson Street. I have a son who's in third grade at Wallace and a daughter who's in pre-K 4 at Brandt. First, I want to say welcome to all the new, newly-elected and re-elected board members and to thank all of you for your service. It's not easy. I've been coming to these for a while, and my head spins sometimes at what happens and the abuse you have to take and the challenges that you face, even down to small things like scaffolding, which, you know, from my perspective should be easy, but it's not. So thank you for all that. And actually, going along with that, the issue I wanted to raise was the PARC assessment, which everyone's talking about. After going to the Wallace PTO meeting where Mr. Bartlett and Ms. DeCunta spoke, they spoke for two hours, they were very generous with their time, I left feeling really good about where we are with the curriculum, how they're assessing all the way through. The one thing, and the thing that's going to trip us up, is the lack of technology. And Mr. Bartlett was saying things are going to be on board, and I know, Ms. Mitchell, you're positive about it. But I would relay, just today, my son was at an after-school prep session for PARC, and the very first day, the computers are not working in the Wallace lab. So that's time wasted, valuable time, and I just don't have the confidence that these issues are going to be addressed in time. And it's an issue of the broadband speed or the servers, it's not necessarily the equipment, although I'm sure the desktops could be upgraded. I know we have tons of Chromebooks coming, but I know in the case of my son's class, they won't be using, as of now, the Chromebooks for the exam, the third grade I'm talking about. So just these little minor things, these are the things that I think will trip us up. And we have what I think is a golden opportunity, we're starting on a level playing field with every other district. And I don't know, I just, I sort of want everyone to see, like, what Hoboken can do. And I would love if we had some good results and we didn't have as many hiccups, or we didn't say, "Well, everyone's going to have problems," you know, that we were sort of leading the way on this. And I think it's going to come down to things like that. And I would just, I would offer my services and I would encourage all of you to tap into the community more. We have an example of something, you know, minor but really made a big difference with the cosmetic changes that have been happening at Wallace. And, you know, that was tapping into the community, or someone coming forward, Jackie saying, "I want to do this." And I think there's many, many parents who are just eager to get involved, eager to do good, eager to put their talents and their energy to use. And, you know, I know my husband, he's like, "I'll go in there, I'll fix all the computers." It's naive in a way, but, you know, we want to do our part. And if it just comes down to logistics and things like that, I think, you know, we can, we can improve. And I just would encourage you all to try to facilitate that community spirit. And I think that would go a long way to making the perception of our schools, and we know perception is reality, just much more positive. And I'm just, I'm just tired of everybody criticizing our schools. I can criticize because I go there in a way, but, you know, I just, I want to see every positive thing happening that we can, that's in our control to do. And please use us. We're willing and eager and dedicated, and we love our children and we love our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Mr. Moffett?
Joe Mindak.
Hi, good evening. My name is Joe Mindak. I'm the president of the Hoboken Rotary Club in town. I'm also a father of two. My son, Finneas, is nine years old, goes to Wallace, and my daughter, Campbell, is seven, goes to Wallace. And great job, Jackie, and everyone, for the improvements on Wallace. The school looks great. My kids love the school. My wife and I are completely happy with the school, so great job to you guys and the board and everyone that's doing a good job with that. And we want to send our kids to the high school, you know, so we're committed to staying in town. And a bunch of parents like Erin, behind me, Stelli, and Sheila who just spoke, and a few other parents got together and said, "Well, why don't we send our kids? We're here, we're staying in Hoboken, and, you know, let's check out the high school, let's see what we can do about sending our kids there." So we formed a committee called Residents for Red Wings. We're going to be sponsored by the Rotary, is going to be backing us. And my company's backing it with some PR and some website campaigns and things like that. So we're basically here to introduce ourselves, say hello to you tonight, and let you know that we're here, and we're looking to work with the board. We met with Ms. Pick and a couple of the people, got a tour of the high school, and we were really surprised, not surprised, but actually pleased about how great the high school was. We were, you know, we thought it was good, but when we went in there and saw everything going on, we were really pleased and excited about it. So we really want to let other parents know about the high school. I think there's just a bad perception about what's going on there, and it's just really hearsay and stuff that people hear in the playgrounds, but no one's actually been in there and seen what's going on there. And we want to let that out and let people know about that. And then we just want to be here as a resource and whatever we could do to help and work with the PTO and board event and anyone else to help, you know, get the word out or whatever else you need us to do, you know, we're interested in staying and hopefully sending our kids there and continuing, you know, making the school better and doing whatever we can to help. So that's it. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, oh, we're okay? Okay. Next speaker, Mr. Moffett?
Yeah, last speaker, Jackie Dowd.
Hi, Jackie Dowd, 415 Newark Street. I wasn't really sure what I wanted to say, and I decided I would come up and speak. So I just decided I would tell my story, and I'm afraid it might be longer than five minutes, so I'm going to talk really fast, like a New Yorker. My son has attended the public schools since pre-K 3. We had an excellent experience in the preschool. We decided to continue to kindergarten, but I have to say, it was at that time that we felt a little anxious about our son's education, as we had heard rumors from, you know, people we thought we trusted and knew that, you know, the public schools were weak and, you know, you really need to get into a charter or a private school or move out of town. So we started that process, you know, we started looking at the different schools, the private schools didn't work for our son and his learning style, the charter schools, we had high numbers. So we continued on, and, you know, we decided to stay. And I actually took a year off of my job so I could further get myself educated about what education is about and what makes a good education, which was an interesting experience. I went up to Westchester and I looked at some of the best rated schools there. I talked to a lot of people, you know, I questioned people, I questioned the superintendent, the business manager, the principal, things like that. When my son got to first grade, I had an issue with one of the policies, and I started talking to people in the PTO, and someone told me to go talk to Irene Sobolov. And I did, and I expected her to be defensive and dissuade me from my concern, and she was actually the opposite. She actually was very open and encouraged me to talk to more people and, you know, to share my concerns. And it was really from there that I started to have a very positive feeling about what the board was doing. And, you know, started to come to board meetings and, you know, I participated in the latest campaign, because I felt very strongly about the people who were trying to get elected, that they would continue to do the right thing. I joined the Wallace PTO. As you heard, I joined the facilities meeting, and, you know, I've been very pleased to find a lot of other parents like myself at Wallace. I think one of the things I learned over the past year is, from talking to other parents, is that no one really knows what makes a school really good. I think a lot of parents go by what they hear from other people, and they go by ratings. And one of the things I learned from Irene, she, you know, once we started talking and I started going to her about some of the novice questions that a lot of people in Hoboken don't understand, things about why the test scores are the way they are, ratings, things like that, became very clear to me. So, you know, what's happened over the past year, my son has continued to get an excellent education, you know, he has a lot of friends that he enjoys. We have had excellent, excellent teachers, teachers that I feel we're in constant communication with, that work with us. And, am I running out of time? So our experience has been great. At one point, my son needed some extra help with his reading, and he was put in the RTI program, and within a couple of months, he was like on par, and then he took off from there. You know, he gets constant messages about kindness and how to be a good person. There's a big anti-bullying campaign at Wallace. So, you know, I can just say that we've had a great experience. And, you know, I see a lot of parents like me that want to make sure their child gets an excellent education, but also appreciate the value of diversity. And that's really where we are. And I just wanted to say thank you again, like everyone, this has been such a nice meeting, I have to say. After coming here for a year, listening to some of the stuff that you have had to listen that I, I mean, I come out of these meetings just so upset, because I feel like it's so far from reality for our schools, some of the comments that are made. So I just want to say thank you so much for all that you do and that what you're doing really does matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this applause is for all our speakers.
Ms. Dowd, you still have 30 seconds.
Yeah, and I think, I think all four of our speakers were refreshing and wonderful. So let's give them all a round of applause.
Thank you.
Okay. So now, before we close, we are going to have board trustee comments on your comments. So I'll start on my left. Monica, would you like to?
Thank you, guys, for sharing your experiences. It's been really a very nice meeting all around. Even an executive session was very nice, pleasant. I did have a question. When is your charity event? Because we didn't, I didn't hear the date.
Tell them the digital backpack.
So, so there's two more. There's two more coming up. They're small, they're like family-friendly drop-off events. The next one is this Sunday, this upcoming Sunday. And then there's another one in mid-February, which will be another drop-off event. And then my big one is my charity ride, and that is March, I have the flyer with me, March 29th.
Okay.
I know, I thought you--
Change date.
We tweaked the date. So March 29th is my big one.
March 29th, okay. Just so everyone else can--
And, Dr. Hernandez, did you say it's in the digital backpack?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so it's in the digital backpack on the website, for those that have been listening later to the meeting. And, well, that's all.
Yay!
Thank you. Ms. Evans?
I agree. It's great to hear such nice things and to have a pleasant meeting.
Mr. Kuffeld?
No, I'll thank you for coming tonight.
Ms. Angley?
Just want to thank you all for making my first official meeting, such a positive one. And I agree, I mean, I've had such a wonderful experience with my children in the public schools and the district schools, and that's the reason I'm here. So, thank you.
Mr. Biancamano?
Yes, certainly, it was a breath of fresh air to get four great public speakers to the microphone who certainly really care about this district. And I know, Mr. Mindak, we spoke about the parent organization that you wanted to start in terms of getting students enrolled in our high school, and I thought it was fantastic. I mean, I was yelling and screaming at the event, that I was like, "Oh, that's wonderful." Because, as I've said in this meeting before, one of the biggest issues we have in high school is our enrollment there from 9 through 12. So if we can have wonderful, young, energetic parents like yourselves, marketing the high school by word of mouth, to me, that's the best marketing, and that's exactly what this organization that you're beginning is going to do. And I can't thank you enough for volunteering your time doing that, so. And I know, I speak for myself and probably everybody on this board, or I'll just speak for myself, that I'm there for you. Anything you need, as you know, my parents have a small business, so if you want to hang up posters or anything like that, I'm there for any, any questions and things like that. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell?
Yes, I've been on the board, I believe, for almost four years, and I would have to say that this is the most pleasant board meeting I've ever attended. Thank you so much. Roses to the parents. It was just very refreshing. And thank you, guys. And I'm a parent of a senior who had, a senior in the high school, who had gone from Calabro, walked into Calabro as a kindergartner, and I've been very pleased, and that's some of the reason I'm up here. I'm an interested parent, I'm a proud parent. I spent many years in the audience, supporting our board, and I'm just absolutely proud. And I'm so happy to see that this district has turned around and we're having, we've had such a positive meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Sobolov?
Well, two, one, I just want to make a really brief, sort of technical thing, technical, to answer Melissa's question, because I know that that's an issue not only just in Hoboken, but in, across the country, I think, you know, whether schools are ready or not. And I know that the district has been doing a lot of work, and especially with the grant that we got. So maybe it might be nice to have an update, because I know that they're working on the band and the network, so maybe there was a glitch today, or, you know, we could see if that's an ongoing thing, and it would be nice to have an update.
Yeah, I think--
So I just want to make sure you got an answer for that.
I did, I'm, oh, I'm sorry.
But I also, I wanted to share everybody's sentiment today. You know, I think I've been around for a long time, and I, anybody who knows me knows that I believe that positive speak always counters negative. I mean, so I think that there's always going to be the kind of chatter in the park and the people, and I always try to, you know, to just share a positive story. So I think that is so nice today, is to hear. I know people are out there, so I think that as we talk to each other, and it's energizing, I think. I mean, there's a lot of commitment, we all get involved in different ways, we have different things to offer and bring to the table. But I think that if we all, you know, come together and share them together, it's very energizing to hear other people's positive stories, and I thank you for your involvement other people's positive stories. And I, I thank you for your involvement and your commitment, and it's, uh, yes, great. It sounds so funny, but yes, it was a very nice meeting today. So thank you for coming out. It's been on a very, very cold night. So thank you.
Uh, Dr. Hernandez, would you like to comment?
Yes, I'd like to also, uh, uh, repeat some of the things I already heard, that this was an excellent meeting, and I thank all the parents for all the fine comments. And just to, uh, touch upon the technology part, we did have a dry run in December where we had all the computers up and running on a practice park test, and we did find some glitches and some things that we're addressing. Um, and I'm sure that we still are going to find some more, but we do have another dry run in, in February to address any other additional things that may, may come up. And I can assure you that we are working hard in the, in the background to, to prepare ourselves for the park testing. Okay, so hang in there. And, uh, okay, thank you.
So, um, yeah, as far as the technology goes, I was actually having a conversation with a parent, um, who lives in another town, who also, uh, their town was also a beta site. So we were a beta site for testing, which I certainly think was a great thing that we were able to do, because it did give us a jump to be able to know, maybe a scary jump, because we realized how much it was going to be. And we were also fortunate enough to have applied and received that grant from, uh, the United Arab Emirates, which certainly gave us the funding, uh, to do, uh, what we need to do. And, um, just as a side note, one of the things that will be different about committees this year is we've actually divided, um, the discussion of technology into two places. Facilities will be handling, uh, the infrastructure technology, and actually the discussions about instructional technology, which is a lot about what, um, Melissa, you referenced, the laptops and the Chromebooks and all that, are actually going to be part of the curriculum and programs discussion, because they really do go more hand-in-hand there. And, um, we, the committees that I put together, hopefully will draw some strength to make sure that we can help. But always, um, it's great to hear the positives as well as the concerns, because, um, you know, as board members, we are not supposed to be administering. We're an oversight, and so we have to be careful. So it's great when we hear both sides from you. So I thank you. And I just want to say that, um, and I'm using first names because I'm not great with last names, but Jo, Melissa, and, um, you all discussed, uh, that feeling of being nervous about kindergarten and, and the rumors. And it don't, you know, there's no reason to be embarrassed about that, because that's probably the biggest common bond that a lot of the public school parents have. And I just, well, I remember that feeling very well, and I remember being very worried, not so much about kindergarten, but worried about, "Oh, is it going to be okay in second grade?" and these feelings. And, you know, my son is a seventh grader, and thrilled and happy. And not only am I very confident that the high school will be an excellent place for him to continue learning and to prepare for, to get into a good college and all those things, he's also excited about going to the high school. And that's a wonderful change, because not only is the talk and the fear for the parents, but our kids also hear that, and they think about, and they don't have the confidence. So just, I'm living with an example of a child who's excited about going to Hoboken High School in seventh grade, and I, I think that that's great. So, um, you know, thank you. And, and Residents For Red Wings, great. And I know we have, uh, Erin, your children go to another school. I think it's great that you're involved. I don't know your last name, sorry, I'm being familiar. And this is like a great thing to have. And just as Sheila was talking about, what she's done, there's always room, uh, the, the, the school will get stronger, the stronger a community that we can build. And that means having active parents and active community members. So this was a great meeting, a very exciting meeting. Uh, Dr. Hernandez, if you could make note to figure out how we could maybe have an update on, um, how things are going in technology, maybe some kind of, uh, you know, goods and bads, you know, uh, you know, successes and things that are still hindering us, uh, at maybe the next meeting. I think it would be very nice for the community and also give the board a perspective of the challenges that our, um, our staff is working to overcome. So, okay, so on that note, um...
Motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second by Jeanne Murray.
Oh.
Who was first? I'm sorry, I missed the first one.
Motion by Erin. Call roll?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.